Yeah.
Go ahead, bud.
They get something shared up on the screen.
We welcome everybody here. Bran, any of you that are on the planning commission out there, we thank you for making yourself available today so we can sit and talk about this master plan of West Weaver County.
Okay, so we wanted to bring you guys, we've got a work session with the planning commission tomorrow, thank you. And it's our first work session session with the planning commission. Planning commissioners have been involved in the public meetings that we've been having and they've been kept up to speed. But we wanted, this is the first time today I'll get to sit down with the maps and really kind of put pen to paper and see where we're going with this. In advance of doing that, we wanted to kind of talk to you guys and just make sure that you guys were comfortable with the direction that we were going in.
Will you, sorry, will you minimize the group so we can? So I like to touch and feel. Okay, yeah.
Just keep your hands to yourself.
So, okay, just so you guys know, when we went, I mean, some of you were there, but we went up to the West Weaver in their open house. We showed a variety of maps and the three different maps that you could see, you've got scenario one in front of you, we've got the two and three over here.
These are the maps that I remember seeing when we went out elementary, so they include the comments and the the input from the residents, which is wonderful.
So Charlie, what's all the dots on here? What do they mean?
Red dots mean, basically, we don't like it, don't want it, and green dots mean we like it, we want it. We did hear that a couple of times there'd be someone who put a green dot down and somebody would go cover it with a red dot and vice versa.
I like right there.
Uh huh, but and I've been able to flesh kind of those. It's just fine if somebody puts a dot next to somebody else's dot. There was one incidence, apparently, if some people a red dot right over top of someone's green dot, so you couldn't see the green. And I went over, I went through all the maps and tried to pull them apart so that we we knew.
So you can at least see that they were both sides, okay?
That's right. So in those meetings, one of the things that we discussed with the public is expectations. From our 2018 public involvement process, it was very clear to us that folks in West Weaver like one acre lots as long as they're surrounded with large open spaces. What is not clear to us is whether or not the folks out west like one acre lots when it's wall to wall one acre. And that's what we're seeing in these subdivisions that are emerging, one to one or what wall wall one acre suburban lots. These are large lot suburban developments. From what I expect and what I have been hearing from the from the public, that is just not desirable. Most people that show up to these meetings are showing up because they're protesting developments that have been occurring at that one to one density, essentially, one acre to one dwelling right density. Now, some folks are not happy.
Hold on, I mean, yeah, but that's, that's a little bit. They they also don't want the, they don't want the four level apartment buildings like we've seen in West Haven.
Right.
You know, so I I would say that they they're, you know, maybe consider a little less density than an acre, but they certainly don't want to get to four level, yeah.
No, that's that's for sure, that they don't want to see a lot of high density for most of the areas out west.
And I agree with that, like that.
And so as we've been fleshing this out, the the first few boards we had in that meeting, we showed what the 2003 general plan says.
Wow. Charge.
Come on down, we do. So the first board we showed is what the 2003 general plan said. The second board we showed is what our current zoning says, and the third board we showed or fourth board we showed was what full buildout looks like if we continue to follow the plan that we have, which is one dwelling unit every acre wall to wall.
So scenario one, this is our zoning today.
No, scenario one, these, all three of these scenarios are future possibilities.
Oh, okay. So this isn't our current?
No, let me.
You just said something about number one was our current.
Yes, the first.
I kind of thought maybe this was it.
Sorry, no, the first few boards we set out was what the current plan is, I don't have them shown right here, I can pull them up, but basically, you've seen them before, it's the the red dots that populate the entire area out.
Okay.
So if every landowner who owns vacant land wants to maximize their density, that's what you're gonna get, you're just gonna get one dwelling in every acre, just like we see in these one dwelling to the acre subdivisions that are emerging out west. And one thing that seems pretty clear to me is that's not what the public wants either. They want one dwelling unit per acre, well, they as a whole seem to want one dwelling unit per acre surrounded by large acreages of farmland and open.
Of course they do.
Right. That is what rural is, in fact, a lot of people said the style of one dwelling unit to the acre as shown on that dot map is exactly why they moved out of Syracuse or moved out of Royway or moved to the area from some of those suburban locations, even large lots, suburban locations, because they don't want to see that. Okay, so that's.
That we understood. Charlie, when you get into areas like this, the large property owners aren't saying that.
Right.
Geez, the very large property owners, they've all come in and want 1,200 units or twenty, 400 units there, 1,200 1,200 acres.
They brought in with them.
Get that up on the screen for you guys. So that's the one category is a small property owners. And the other category, you've got large property owners. And to be honest with you, we, I have had conversations, not on the public record, with folks who own a lot of property who don't want their neighbors to know that they're in support of of higher density, because they don't, they don't want to be that heretic in the community, but they definitely, not all of them, but some of them definitely support higher densities. In fact, as we were working with the larger property owners, I think a majority of the larger property owners would like to see just a little bit more land wealth possibilities coming out of these, they definitely don't want to see less, a lot of these folks are relying on the land wealth that they have for retirement or for posterity. And so you've got kind of the the small property owners who don't have the potential to re-subdivide and realize more land wealth. It's almost diverse, the large property owners who do have the possibility. So as we looked at the map as a whole, we wanted to try and do something that was least impactful. I do think that it is possible to get more density in this area while still paying tribute to the agricultural heritage of the area. A lot of it has to do with how you design the public realm. Curb gutter sidewalk tends to be suburban types of development standards, but if you are looking at development standards a little bit more like streets that look a little more like that on the side there.
Which side? Are you sharing your screen so those online can see it?
I am.
Thank you. I like that one at the top with the trees.
So all three of them are.
Not everybody's gonna ride a bike.
Right. All three of them are quite similar. The top one is the large, is the larger collector, hundred foot wide. You go down to eight or foot wide, still, it's two laner instead of that middle suicide lane. I don't know why they call it that, turn lane, middle turn lane. And then you go down to neighborhoods where you don't paint the yellow line and then you go down to very small minor neighborhood streets. A little more, there we go. Now, that looks pretty rural, and it's because you don't have the curb gutter and the sidewalk in the standard fashion of suburban community. That's one side of it. Another thing that fleshed out from you and the Highlands area is a lot of this has to do with spacing of homes. Can you get more homes in an area and still have it viewed from the public realm as 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 small, low density as it was previously? And I think you can. So in the Utah Highlands area, we've got 15,000 square foot lots and 20,000 square foot lots.
You went to Highlands or Utah?
You went to, sorry, you went to Highlands area. Sorry, the the coffee is causing my mouth.
Got your tongue going faster than yours.
That's right.
Just trying to make sure I understand.
Yeah, no, thanks. So in the you into Highlands area, you've got 15,000 square foot lots and 20,000 square foot lots predominantly. Now, we know we've had a couple of folks coming in asking for smaller lot sizes, 10,000 square foot lot sizes and 12,000 square foot lot sizes. And we've given it to them in the Utah Highlands. If the width of those lots and so the frontage and the setbacks of those lots, site setbacks were the same as they are in the RE 15 zone from the street, you wouldn't notice a difference, a difference, the difference for those lots is gonna be smaller backyards. Now, what we're hearing from developers is they like wider lots and deeper lots, wider means you got get more prominence of a home on the street and those sell better. You think about the narrow deep lots in in Ogden City, you can get a 3,000 square foot home in those, but they don't look like 3,000 square foot homes from the street. So there's a little bit of.
They're narrow and deep.
That's right, there's a little bit of prominence that comes out of the wider lots and the wider homes that could be put on them. In fact, we've spoken with a lot of folks who would love to do smaller lots like 6,000 square foot lots. Our minimum width on that 6,000 square foot lot is 60 feet, may say, if we do 6,000, we're not doing 60, but we're doing at least eight, if not 100 on those lots because they want wider.
I agree with that.
So I think there is a way to get a little bit more density while still appearing to be the same. You build the street in a rural way that still provides for all the traffic, it still provides for all the drainage facilities that are needed. And then you space your homes out in in very similar fashion. Now, here in Western Weaver, so talking about west of the urbanized area, we're, we've kind of come to the table with a bit of luck because we have already put a lot standard of 150 feet wide for a one acre lot. Now, one acre lot at 150 feet is a very deep lot. If we were to say 200 feet, you can go narrower, narrower, or sorry, not not as deep, and you can have those homes still even spaced out even further.
Okay, hold on. Just just one last comment on that. We just learned that the cost of maintaining, providing services on a road was $3 and how much cents per?
$3.22.
$3.22 per foot.
So that.
And right now, we're taxing people at a dollar a foot. So their taxes are being mine, yours, Gage, our taxes are being subsidized by other forms. But if people want this lower density, yeah, it's what you've always said. If people want the lower density, they're gonna have to pay for it in higher taxes. Higher ta, you know, higher density, I guess normally means lower taxes. Unless it's Ogden City.
Per unit.
Per unit.
So when you look at it that way, there's an alternative to that. And that is getting a commercial and a retail tax base. If you have a commercial and a retail tax base, a strong one, you could potentially have that retail and commercial tax base supplement the the larger lots that are in the area. And so, I mean, there's, there's a mixture of options that are available. But I agree with you, Commissioner Harvey, looking at wider lots may not be the best idea. The point that I'm trying to make is that if you were to go down to half acre lots, third acre lots, or even quarter acre lots currently are RE 15 zone, that's a half foot width frontage. So you are cutting a 40,000 square foot lot by thirds, right, into third acre lots, but still having 100 feet of frontage where the the one acre lot requires 150, so you're not quite cutting it by a third in terms of width. So as you drive down that street in RE 15 zone, you've got potentially three times as many homes in that area, but as you drive down the street, you're only looking at two thirds more than than the other.
I also want to comment if I can, Mr. Chair, just really quickly.
It does, so this is a very informal meeting.
Great.
Speak up.
Okay, so I also want to have enough frontage in cul-de-sacs so our guys have a place to stack snow.
Yes.
You know, the the these guys that come in here and want five or six homes in a cul-de-sac, you know, and the only approach is maybe two car wide, there's no place to stack snow in the winter, and if you live in a cul-de-sac, those guys plow it all on your it's horrible.
Do we not have a standard in our subdivision code that requires a snow storage easement? Let me.
But you do, you do have a requirement for lot width, and that determines how many can get in a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I would say, well, the front on a cul-de-sac, all the width's in the back. And so I would say a frontage maybe 80 foot in the front and, you know, or something like that.
Well, let them tell you what are current processes.
One problem with cul-de-sacs is with our lot width, it's measured at the setback of the home. That's right. So in cul-de-sacs, you end up pushing that back in the radius.
Which is appropriate, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, no.
It just depends on.
But it narrows down, puts more, as Commissioner Harvey said, it puts more homes within that radius, within that cul-de-sac.
But I would push back a little bit, I would say at the curb, we need to have it so, we need to have so much distance there. Yeah, I don't care how far the setback is on, but I care that there's enough width where you can stack snow, you can have a three car or two car wide driveway and then have a place to stack snow in there, whatever they decide to do with landscape out front.
Looking at these street right of way standards, the minor neighborhood street that you're seeing right here, the minor neighborhood street that I would suggest we do wouldn't even have sidewalks on it, minors will, I think should only be used in the case of cul-de-sacs. And if you don't have sidewalks, you've got a lot of area in that drainage easement to actually push snow, even on a cul-de-sac, so I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
I think minors, if it's a dead end road, a cul-de-sac, I think minors could even drop down to 50 in width, which gives people a little bit more area to work with as they configure their.
So you would take out the sidewalk within that cul-de-sac?
Yes, if it's a cul-de-sac, yeah, the street will be the area that people are, I, my, my dad and my stepmom, they're on a cul-de-sac, they've got sidewalks that go around that cul-de-sac. We were never on the sidewalk, we were always in the street with our rollerblades or our bikes, it's just, and our basketballs and everything.
Yeah. No, I I get that.
Kind of a waste of of money, infrastructure, all that. As long as we're not talking about a huge cul-de-sac.
Well, it depends on if you're a walker or not. You know, I live in a town without sidewalks. And Plain City, they have sidewalks that go to the schools, and there's a few areas they have sidewalks, but I don't have a sidewalk in front of my house. And my ha, my street is heavily used by walkers with no sidewalks.
Are you on a cul-de-sac?
No, just going down the road, but I wish we had sidewalks in those.
Do you?
Yeah, I do.
So looking at this, I would only suggest.
Because I'm a walker, though.
Yeah.
That's why.
I would only suggest sidewalks if we do go in that direction, I don't want to suggest it on the cul-de-sacs, if you go through a street, you need to have somewhere for people to walk, I agree.
I agree. So I think, I kind of think, number one, we need to decide what we want this to develop like out here. And that's kind of, I'm hoping that the planning commission will weigh in heavy on this.
I agree.
And tell us that, and then I just wrote my standard kind of up here. You know, a quarter acre, I have no problem with quarter acre and 90 foot. I have no problem with third acre and 100 foot and a half acre and 100 foot. That's the standard the Plain City developed to, not minus the quarter acre. But I agree with what you said, I don't mind a quarter acre at 90 foot, you gotta really stop and look hard to make sure it isn't the 100 foot you just drove by because it's only 10 foot difference.
Right, and I would agree with what you put there, the change, what I would love to see is that if we keep the 150 feet frontage for an acre, that we drop the, what's our, what's our current requirement, is it 40,000 feet for an acre?
Yes.
If we keep, I'd either like to drop the frontage on an acre from 150 to maybe 100 and a quarter, but decrease that to like 35,000 feet. Again, you know what I'm saying, so 40,000, again, 40,000 square feet is just gonna create extra space for irrigation, it's gonna put junk cars, so I would like to make, if we're gonna do acre lots, I'd like to make them more home friendly.
I agree with that.
Which would be, and the way you do that is you decrease either the frontage, well, I think you really have to decrease the square footage too.
I'll be honest with you, Gates, as far as I'm concerned, now that this is developing, I do a way take our lot.
Well, and I, I'm okay with that too. Roger's saying if we, if we keep acre lots, I think we had to look at, we'd need to change the standard.
And I'd, I'd support that, just so you know.
So let me show you in the, so here's the plan text that I've been, very drafty.
Okay, well, before you get to that, I really liked what we were talking about here. So when I look at this, the difference, so in Plain City, we came by and we went out in the field and picked an area and said, okay, that is where our future commercial site will be, in that field. And it was on 3,500 where it came through, and a lot of people thought we were nuts when we did that.
For your commercial?
But that's what we set aside, and as soon as the demand housing was high enough, sure enough, we had a company come out there and buy a four or five acre parcel and said, good, this is where I want to put my groceries store.
Is that where your Maverick?
Kent's. At Kent's.
Yeah.
And everybody's coming around it, and it turned out perfect, I think. It's a small commercial area, and that's about all we need, we don't need a whole lot more than that.
Right.
And most people are happy if they want buy new tires or if they want to, something like that, they go into town and get it. But if, for what we have, and you know, it's a busy little area. We find, we find people from far west in there, my daughter lives out here in West Weaver, right there, she comes over there to shop. Anyway, it's a great little hub. And that's what I'd like to see here, I think we need to pick, and I think we kind of have picked. The fact that we agreed to this some time ago, that's gonna be the city center, right there, that.
So is this 4,700?
Uh huh, 4,712.
Yeah, well, you, that's already been zoned, commercial.
Right.
On all four corners, right?
Yeah, correct.
So I agree, so this is your commercial hub right here.
I agree with that.
I think we, so I don't think we even need to change that.
No, I agree.
Right?
I agree. Then when you say, well, okay, we've got to have some density out here, where would you put that?
Near the commercial center.
Yeah, so I view this as a high volume road and the railroad tracks, and it's, it's low in interest for housing. So if that's the case, traditionally, what you do is you stack your density in there and use it as a buffer, right?
Exactly.
And so I would view this as commercial and density.
So this corridor right?
Right. Yeah, that's what I would do there.
Does the yellow mean anything?
Yeah, yeah, yellow means medium sized residential.
Medium sized, which is quarter, half acre.
So we haven't established that yet, I wanted to go over some of this text just.
So I, I, so so far, I agree with you 100%, I mean.
Okay, well, then when we come out here.
Now, let's back up a second, excuse me. So when we say medium, now, there's got to be a point, you know, we had that request for townhomes up on 12th Street to the east. If we're gonna put, what I'm gonna call.
Is that right there that you're talking about?
Yep.
That little lolly?
Yeah.
Okay, right there.
If we're gonna put multifamily anywhere, in my opinion, it needs to be in this corridor.
I agree with that.
Whether that's fourplexes, whatever that, whatever, townhomes, whatever that is, I think that needs to be in this corridor right here.
So commissioners, I've got kind of a logical method, I'd like to kind of.
Okay. We're on a little bit of a roll there, I don't want, I don't want this to go away for a minute.
Okay.
So you see people have written here, no commercial or too much commercial, this was all here before we ever came.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was all zoned and it was always meant to be that way. Oh, this was.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is 8,300 right here.
Here's 67.
Oh, okay, okay, well, then I don't necessarily disagree with that.
What's this say, no commercial?
Uh, in here, so this would all be housed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and I, yeah, I I don't disagree with this because if you've got commercial here.
That's right.
I don't think you need it here.
That's what I agree.
At least in our lifetime.
Yeah. Okay, I agree with that.
As you enter into here.
Yeah.
Commercial. Into Randy's area, if commercial decides that, hey, we need some spots, there's plenty of ground out here. The difference between here and here is not gonna stop anymore.
I agree, that's a few hundred yards in some cases.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I don't disagree with.
I agree with that.
No commercial.
Okay, well, then I think what we need to decide now, or want to talk about now, Charlie, is where we go from here. Because if Bran and our planning commissions online, we kind of agree on how we think this ought to develop, so what does this mean now?
Yeah.
Explain what you've done here.
So the dots are just what the folks who were in that, excuse me, in that meeting put on the map, expressing their like or dislike.
So red's dislike.
Correct. Red is dislike, green is like.
So what are they covering up here?
That, that's the.
I get it.
So the reason why I.
Well, okay, but look at all the likes on our commercial corner, Gage.
Yeah.
So everybody likes that, what does that mean right there, Charlie?
So this is no commercial.
That means no commercial going down in that direction.
On that side of the track.
On that side of the track.
Okay, I agree with that.
Well, that's okay.
Now, you gotta look at all three maps together because you'll see a little bit of a different context, in fact, flip the page over and see.
Hold on. I just want to make sure we see this true, so that's the border right there.
So is, is the red saying no commercial?
No commercial.
So that's 8,300 right there.
Yep.
Oh, I.
That's already zoned, that's already zoned for heavy industry over there.
Yeah, I, to me, you're gonna start working into manufacturing here.
Right.
Commercials up here.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, we kind of see this.
You guys agree with that?
Flip this over, you say? I, I was just saying, when you're looking at them, you're gonna want to look at them in tandem, so you look at that commercial center on 47 and 12, and somebody said over here, no, we don't want to see that. Right there, yeah, somebody said, yep, somebody said over here, we don't want to see that, so it's.
That's already done.
Yeah, we, that decision's been made.
So it's gonna be a little bit of interpretation of all three maps, I don't know that we're gonna make the. I don't think we're gonna make them happy in the long run, the, the point that I was trying to make with explaining the, the, the red dot map from the beginning is they're not happy with the future that we've already planned, and when I say we, I mean people who came before us. And if you go through the 2003 general plan document, they weren't happy at that time with one unit to the acre everywhere.
Yeah.
And so at the end of the day, it, it feels like the idea of one unit to the acre surrounded by farmland is probably not the future. Unless there are drastic changes, I just don't see.
Well, so how do you, do you think that's part of the future?
No.
When you see probably not, you're speaking here like you don't want to take a shot from us.
No, no, oh, no, no, no.
No, no, my point is, we know, we've already had a group come in with 1,200 acres here, and Randy's told us openly, he's made no secret out of it, that he's got 1,200 acres in this area right here.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we know factually.
That is gonna.
That, that, that those two areas are gonna go, well, just by that, that changes everything.
Here and here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what I'm trying to say, I'm trying to explain, we had 140 people, 150 people at that meeting, I'm trying to explain 150 different opinions at the same time and get to the point to basically say, I don't think anyone's gonna like the idea of growth. But I do, but I do feel like a lot of folks would rather see it organized rather than just spread out all the wall suburban one acre development. And so if we have the opportunity to keep some one acre lots in some locations, maybe we can, and then rezone properties that are within proximity to sewer to maybe smaller lot sizes, it makes more sense, we know we need some residential areas. We know the A1 zone, where it is right now, is not agriculture one acre zone, it's oxymoron to say agriculture one acre, right? We know it's residential. And so let's call it what it is, it's residential, and then give them a little bit more density in those areas. It seemed to me, most of the folks who were engaged in this process said, we get it, we don't want the one acre wall to wall, but we also don't want more density in our backyard. And so where do we put it? That's the question. And so when you see the red dots, it's folks saying not in my backyard.
Yeah.
And that's, it's, that's why it's so spread out as much as it is, now, you do have large landowners who are saying good ideas.
Yeah, yeah, people who live here are not, are gonna be objectionable to any density, but they're not gonna mind it down here.
That's right, that's exact, that's exactly right.
That's, that's reality of it.
That's exactly right, so I think a lot of people.
So what was this bad?
Oh, it's, it's the same thing, it's just another scenario, so that's scenario two.
All right, so let's, here, no, suddenly it's back.
Placing back, thank you.
So Charlie, when we get to this point then, I think what we need to decide and tell the planning commission our opinion of is what we think ought to be in the other areas as far as, so for example, north of 12th Street at 4,700, we've had, well, right here, I guess we're at, we've had a group come in, Hooper, Hooper Water.
Right.
And they said, okay, we've now got a plan to put a, a kind of a figure eight right there and put secondary water into this whole area right there. And they want to, they want to incorporate a master plan for the water north of 12th Street and east of 4,700. So if that's the case, and we know we have secondary water in there, and they've applied for a ARPA grant from Gage.
They got sewer?
Well, no, they don't. But if.
With their cloth.
Right, and if we end up running sewer up the road to here, then this, well, Charlie, this is the other thing besides it. If you're gonna sewer an area, you can't sewer an area on one acre lot.
That's true.
They don't pay.
No.
And I would argue half acre lots don't pay. It depends on the price of the ground, well, the price of the ground's gone so high that you can't afford that almost anymore. So knowing that we're gonna have sewer, well, actually, through this area, we do have sewer, we have a main front line that goes right through there, just like that.
It's the brown line that. It's, it's the brown line that, uh.
Oh, uh, that one right there.
So anywhere you see that brown line, that's a sewer.
Oh, okay. So we do have sewer going right through.
Yeah.
There's a three hundred foot buffer around that sewer showing yellow. Now, in some click, some cases, the yellow goes beyond, but that's where we've kind of already decided residential's gonna go.
Well, so if that's the case, now I'm speaking now my opinion. Okay, and the, everybody on the call's got to understand, I'm not lumping anybody else in here. So if that's the case, I view this area right here. As this right here, four thirds and halves.
I agree.
I view that whole thing.
Well, I don't, and, and I would say, the way I've always looked at this. Is that obviously we've talked about this twelfth street corridor here.
Right.
But I think forty, so if this is commercial, I think that forty seven hundred, wherever, you know, maybe. Everything in Weaver County, east of forty seven hundred, needs to be that same zone.
South too, then you're saying.
Yeah, I, I, so I, I bring in this area too. I don't know why.
So you see there's.
How come these two areas are designated different?
We just put a polygon around existing sewer, or sorry, we put a buffer around existing sewer of three hundred feet.
Oh, didn't worry about the rest.
We didn't worry about the rest.
So I, I just said, you can easily make the case for east of forty seven hundred, here's your commercial mode. And this is, this is easy transition. And then maybe, I just looked at this. Maybe we look at, as you look at either side of forty seven hundred, that's a kind of a main corridor. You look at some type of higher density along forty seven hundred.
Well, so you, you, two thoughts to that gauge. You see those lines? There's your sewer lines.
Yeah.
And we have master plan, those lift stations in here to pick all this up. So I agree, this, I think, follows that.
Yeah.
They're right there together.
To me, I don't see much differentiation between this and this.
I agree with that.
Now, you can make, you can make a differentiation between here and here and then down the road. But I think this is an easy.
So this, this goes to my next thought. You have a K four right there, right?
Yeah.
And you have one right there at the turn of the, of this road right there. You have one right in there.
Right.
So those two areas kind of take that out right now. In fact, when I was talking to, uh, Ron Gibson the other day, he said to me. If we would introduce this program where he could sell, uh, his development right. He would be very interested in selling his development right on part, not all of it, but part of this to protect himself. Well, this goes to what you're talking. If that's the case, right in front of his dairy right there. We ought to put some density.
Yeah.
Allow him to sell off his property to do that.
Yeah, and then those people have some additional ground behind them that they want. And they, that is exactly what they want because there's cows in there, but.
Well, that ends up being a barrier though, a site barrier, a barrier for everything.
Yeah.
You guys are, you guys are going down the same thought process I've, I've found there. So I like, I like where we're going.
You like that?
Well, we're, as you can't tell, we're enjoying expressing ourselves.
Let us know if we start heading.
Well, I, I thought we only had an hour. I was a little concerned, but then I realized we've got two hours. So.
Yeah, so.
We're in good shape. So I think we've talked about two things. The corridor twelfth street being one component, east of forty seven hundred being another.
I agree with that.
And then, and then we, we have hooked, we have, I mean, obviously, we want to put. That higher density where we have water and sewer irrigation water as much as possible. And we want to encourage, so we will encourage that development for water, sewer, and irrigation the minute we do that.
Okay, then to that, let's take the other divided piece. So now south of.
Yeah.
Twelfth and east of forty seven, or west of forty seven hundred. So right here, we're talking about a road going through here.
Right.
Going across the river. Somewhere in here.
It's straight there, you can see.
Yeah, right there somewhere. Well, anyway, we have, uh. That commercial piece right there, Roplelows and the, 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 uh, Green House right here.
Yeah, they're, they're colored right there.
And then right here, we have that subdivision that we just approved, right there.
Those are, are those acre lots? Yep, those are all one acre lots.
So these are acre lots right here.
So I'm of the opinion. That, uh, this should be an RE. Maybe you don't want quarters in here because of those acres, but I'm of the opinion that this should be an RE thirteen for third acres as well.
Around the acres?
Uh huh. Now, that's debatable, and I understand.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna live or die on that. You don't die on the sword.
Not me or you?
Me. I don't know who it is.
But I prob- I would probably say, look, if you've got acres, I'm all, I like the transition from commercial. So if this is commer- is that really commercial now?
No.
Okay.
That's shown on the map as potentially being commercial. And that is to support Randy's request.
Yeah, I'm struggling with the request for commercial there.
We're certainly having to take it off. That, I just barely put it on this morning.
I'm just getting ahead of myself, but I'm saying, look, if you've got acres here. And that's not gonna be, I mean, if that's commercial, if that was commercial, then you need to, you need to transition from commercial to. Quarter, third, etc. But if that's not commercial, you've got acre here. Then the transition more easily is half acre, maybe three, you know, and when I say half acre, may- maybe an acre with thirty thousand square feet versus forty thousand.
He brings a good point up right there. But we know, we know that we're gonna have two sewer connections right there.
Yeah.
They told us that. So it's easy to pick up.
Yeah.
A, a substantial area right there. And if you got sewer, that's density.
Which pays back what we were talking about yesterday.
Well, I drive, the sewers, you know, that's a great point. That sewer then, but I'm just saying, from that, from our one acre subdivision, we should probably make a transition. From not directly into third acre. I'd like, I'd like to see the transition go from acre, maybe half to.
Yeah, quarter. So just so you know, I, I spent fifteen minutes and put these little colors on the map because that was, uh, some feedback we got out of these big maps here from the plan.
Right.
Um, I didn't have enough time. Every other, um, commercial area you'll see has. An orange polygon that goes around it, orange being mixed use residential. And what we mean by mixed use residential, I think we mean multifamily, we mean small lot sizes.
Right.
It's, it's quite flexible in terms of residential. And then beyond that, uh, we have yellow, which would be, uh, medium sized residential, which would be one of these, uh, three that. Um, Commissioner Jenkins wrote on the board. And then green would be the one acre.
Okay.
Residential.
All right, and just so you're aware, tonight Randy is on the planning commissioner agenda, just to look.
Randy.
Roplelows.
Okay, Roplelows.
To look at that area in a work session.
Well, I think we've been very open today. And, and I, I realize we've got planning commission members on here too, and.
Are they listening on?
Uh huh. And so Brendan was on there and I don't, I thought there was one or two more. Anyway. Uh, so I think they understand our thinking here and, uh, what we're thinking on this whole thing. Now, let me tell you, this, this all of a sudden goes into some other decisions that we're gonna have to make.
I know where you're headed.
Well, yeah, are we gonna, are we gonna create a sewer district and put all this in it? Because from what we just outlined, you and me standing here, everything south of that river should be in that sewer district.
I, I agree.
Okay, now, now that's quite a decision right there.
I agree a hundred percent.
And that, I think.
So what we're saying is within this sewer district here, that should then drive our density.
Exactly. Exactly.
Access to sewer.
Access to sewer.
Yep.
And again, we know that acre lots aren't gonna pay the bill on the sewer. They're not gonna pencil.
Well, then if we come here, we know these guys want to develop, so, uh, and these do, so they will come into the master sewer along here somewhere. And this is the road that goes up to Warren. And I, who knows when that day will come, but the capacity will come to run a line from here up to here and that's up all of that.
Fifty nine hundred, yeah.
Yeah, fifty nine hundred. That's right, Gage.
Well, I, I feel comfortable with this. I, well, I basically feel comfortable with this entire area here if we're looking at sewer.
That's the way I feel.
So I feel comfortable with all this. I think we've got a good feel for what's happening out here. This is gonna be driving, you know, been driven by the companies we have once we do the manufacturing.
Yep.
And then like you said, we've already got proposals right here.
Yeah.
All right, now, so let me ask you a question though. A lot of these people say, okay, how do we create open space, or how do we get open space? To offset what we're doing here? So how do we get open space?
I got a plan.
Well, knowing that, we've had some come forward already. So Brad Blanch came in the other day. And he says, uh, on his property right off Texas Farms there, he said he'll give us, uh, four acres for a park right there. Right, just right down from the school.
Yeah, which is, that's, that's where I want to head.
Right.
Then we need to put some meat on the bones in terms of somebody donates, or if we're gonna re, let's say that we approve a forty lot subdivision here. And we ask them to donate ground for a park or open space. We've got to make sure that there's water with it and.
Correct.
Yep. So we've got to put some.
Yeah, you know, the park.
That's what I hate about clusters that we're in right now is that we end up with a cluster.
So the park district down here, they've had four or five offers to give them property, but they won't give them the water with it.
But they won't, yeah.
Yeah, so they turn them down.
Yeah.
I think they should be accepting those properties and finding water later. Getting access to the land is, is hard enough and they're.
I don't know why they would turn it down.
And even if they had that land, they can use that for negotiation and sell that to other ones.
Yeah, and if they have five acres here, somebody next to them's there to develop.
Right.
And then they come in and say, okay, I'll trade you this overpriced dog for this cat over here.
Has the park district levied tax yet?
No.
I don't know where.
No.
Yeah, I didn't think they had.
You know, that's actually a pretty good idea. Uh, the fact that, uh, but the people who donate them, ma- many times they put stipulations on them that they want a park.
Right, yeah, that's true too.
So they can't trade them out.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, you know, I really like the ground we've covered right now, Charlie.
Yeah, I, I do too. Commissioners, if you're okay with it, I'd like to walk.
What is the brown right there?
Uh, that's business tech innovation. Uh, that provides a big buffer between residential and industrial.
Is that eighty three hundred right there?
That is.
Okay, so it's on that side.
Yep, it buffers both sides of eighty three hundred, but yeah, it's.
Now, from the original master plan that you had from years ago and this one today, there's one big difference, I see. And that difference is you showed this is a gray big park and wetland there. Well, that's now shrunk down.
Well, from the original or from now?
From the original. Well, there it is right there. Is that, is those slash marks?
That's the floodplain.
Yeah, well, so I, I believe a fair amount of that's developable now.
I think so.
Especially if we put the sewer in here. So I suspect there will be some kind of changes in there. I don't know what.
I do too. Yeah, and then the new floodplain maps, these are old floodplains, so we haven't included the new floodplain, uh, maps.
I suspect there'll even be more of it.
Yeah.
Well, it's like, it's actually grown, man.
As soon as everybody stops appealing it, and it could actually go forward, uh, it'll be probably a few years before they can actually, with the appeals that are out there.
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you one other master plan thing I'd love to see here. I'd love to see a walking path around that triangle right there.
We got you covered. We'll go to that map.
Right now.
Because I'm telling you, that would be a wonderful.
And now's the time to get that done.
That's right. That'd be wonderful for the, all, all of western Weaver County.
And I think you've got to put stuff like that in to this plan.
Yep.
To offset some of the negative we're gonna have from the dense.
I agree, Gage, this is.
And it makes sense for the future. I mean, even that aside, everybody likes walking, you know, they like, the, the trail in the valleys turned out to be a home run.
Yeah, massive home run.
Yeah.
Well, and then, uh, uh, where you have floodplains and things like that, you can walk through. Trailers can go through those things.
I, I think I'm pretty lockstep with what I've written so far, uh, with what you guys are saying. So Emerald Necklace, that's a, that's a term, a planning term, was it? Olmstead? Olmstead that came up with that. Uh, but basically, yeah, you find your corridors and you put a, a pathway along it. Where you see those proposed, um.
Oh, right here?
Yeah, the pathway is all along that.
Oh, I see them now.
Yeah.
So what are the circles?
So the circles are basically, uh, park areas, uh, opportunities to get parks, which most of that is circling floodplain areas. So it's kind of low hanging fruit for open space and parks. Uh, the, the green guy that's walking, those are proposed or potential future trail, um, heads. Where just a small parking lot, maybe a, a restroom. Uh, again, this is all long-term, create a city to operate and maintain it, or give it to the, the park district and allow them to levy a tax. We should encourage park district to levy a tax and to collect impact fees from every new subdivision that goes in. Uh, to help, uh, uh, create and, and maintain these. But everywhere where a, a street crosses the river, we identify that as a location for a small park trailhead.
So on a small scale, um, they've done this in Ogden City where you have dinosaur park and then the trail system goes down to Mar Court Park. Then the trail system goes down to the rodeo, well, to the nature center.
Nature.
And then it goes down to the rodeo grounds, and then it goes down to the, the river kayak, uh, area. So you have these little jewels along the trail system that draws the user along that. And so that's the intent of this.
Yeah, no, makes perfect sense.
It does.
All right. So I want to watch you guys through a little bit of my thought process. I want to get some steering from you guys if you're comfortable with that.
Okay.
And, uh, so I want to go through a little bit of the text to show you where my thoughts are. And then go to the map to identify specific areas that we should be looking at changing before I get from the planning commission.
Let me, let's back up the trail before you go there. So. Are you going to, if somebody comes in, let's say our guys up on twelfth street, require them to dedicate the space or put in the trail? What's the, what's the plan for that?
It will be that as they develop, they'll need to put in the trail and dedicate the space.
They'll actually.
Right.
Put in the trail.
Now, we still need to do a roughly proportionate analysis and essentially link analysis, which basically says we can't take five of their six acres for a park. Because they're putting two houses in. We wouldn't be able to do that, right?
Right.
But if they're putting twenty homes in, we could.
Yeah.
So we just got to make sure it's roughly proportionate to their.
Well, I, you know, I think before we finalize that, this would be something for the planning commissioner, I guess. Where do we actually want these parks?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's, you know, I just, I, it's not, I don't think it's good form to say, look, anybody that comes in that wants twenty plus has to donate a park. I think we should decide, look, this is the spot for the park. And then put that into our master plan. This is a park and then deal with it. And maybe a developer that comes in that doesn't have to put a park in, look, we're gonna charge you an impact fee.
Exactly.
To pay for this park.
That's right.
But instead of maybe a four or five acre park, you have a ten or fifteen acre park with amenities that people use.
Right. When the developer comes in and is, and is proposing five lots.
Yeah.
We, we take a proportionate percentage and impact fee of those five lots. We put it into a fund, float it over to the park district and let them use it.
That's.
Yeah, I'm all for that. Yeah, I agree. That way the parks you have are more substantial.
Mm-hmm.
They're where you want them. Instead of where other people just pick a spot because they have to give us one.
Now, rather than having the planning commission plan these out, I'm actually planning on sitting down with Roger Heslop before.
No, and that's, well.
We get parks and that.
When I say the plank, so sit down with Kathy Bernu and Hislop and say, this is kind of the direction we're heading.
That's, that's the goal. Yep, and make sure.
They, they're all over that.
Yeah. Well, they're doing a parks master plan at the same time that we're working on this. And so they'll have their master plan. Well, they're doing a parks master plan at the same time that we're working on this. And so they'll have their master plan. We're gonna have a parks and rec section, which is gonna say, let's defer to their master plan, but it also provides some things that we could do to help them along as well. So, uh, let me go to the text just to show you, um, I, I've got a logical, uh, way I want to run you guys through this. Um, so we could all say we're speaking the same language.
Yeah.
Okay, um, one of the goals would say, so we're put, we're putting this down into goals, principles and action items. Okay, uh, one of the goals would be that as growth occurs, a goal we're counting is to ensure it is deliberately and thoughtfully planned and patterns that support efficient organization of infrastructure and services. Provide for a variety of, a variety of housing options and familiar situations and in tandem with transportation goal. One is implemented in a manner in which infrastructure keeps pace with growing, with growth rather than stimulating leap, leapfrog development. Okay, now I've got something in here about large lot residential, but I wanted to focus on medium sized first because I think that's gonna be kind of our, our, our hinge, uh, spot here. As, uh, as areas planned for medium sized residential lots, uh, sorry, areas planned for medium sized residential lots, the yellow area that is on the map. Should be, uh, the areas that have access to sewer services or with installation of sewer infrastructure at the sole expense of the developer can be given access to sewer services. So we're saying if you're within X distance, our current code says three hundred feet. Uh, you need to connect to the sewer. Um, and we won't give you a rezone. We won't give you a rezone to medium sized, uh, residential until you have a plan to create your own sewer infrastructure and connect to the sewer system. And if that means annex in, uh, to a district, then that would be the requirement.
Yeah, I like that.
So future land use map shows property that is within three hundred feet of existing sewer. That area, the polygon that's painted yellow on the map will change as sewer lines are installed, just automatically changed. Automatically update. If you get sewer that just goes out to the entire area west or east of the Weaver River, that entire area automatically updates to yellow on the map. But.
So, I have mixed feelings here because on one hand, while we're planning, if we're gonna give an area an RE, uh, thirteen or an RE fifteen, then they've got to run sewer out.
That's right. That's exactly.
Yeah, there is no medium. And, and told that east of the river, that was everything except for the KFO is.
Right. Yeah, so, uh, when we're looking at medium sized lots, this plan identifies medium sized lots as quarter acres and third acre lots. So anywhere in the green, someone can come in and say, I want to put quarter acre or third size lots right here. We would say, build a sewer line to get it there. Build a sewer line all the way out and we'll get you third acre quarter acre lots.
I'm okay with that.
I kinda am too.
Okay. What that also does.
They'll have to, Brandon, our planning commissioner has to get into detail this because that's pretty substantial. All of a sudden, that means in, in that area that we've kind of picked there. If somebody was a half mile away and there will, even a mile, I'm not sure there'd be a mile, but there'd be a half to three quarter mile area that they'd have to get to. They, they'd struggle getting there. You know, I mean, uh, that, uh, individual person can't build, uh, that for two or three homes. And so all of a sudden, that, that will actually limit our development in some areas.
That's, so that's the point. The point is to ensure you've got.
Limit development. You know, our planning commission is gonna have to look at that, kind of run those scenarios.
So someone looking at two, two or three lots who can't afford it, they'd still be entitled, uh, to whatever the existing zone is, forty thousand square foot. So no different than what they are.
Yeah, but if we change that zone, then I, I'm more with Commissioner Ford here. I kind of want to change the zone.
To thirty-five?
No, to, uh, third acre, RE, RE, uh, uh, fifteen or RE, uh, twenty or RE, you know?
Let me come back over to here. Um, so I think we're saying the same thing. The difference is.
Well, so we're not because what I'm saying, this area right here that's in the green. I'd kind of like to go in there and say, okay, we're gonna divide that up and these will be RE fifteens and, uh, you know, this will all be done. So they're gonna have to, they, yeah, they do get to develop smaller lots. We gotta have sewer to do it. There's no sewer in any of this part here.
That's right. So the, the proposed language says, when you bring sewer to that area, you're automatically painted yellow, which is your, your RE fifteens or your, your quarter acres, whatever we decide that number is. And so it changes to yellow as that sewer expands. If you're in that green area and you want to do two lots. And, and you can't afford to bring the sewer to, to your lots, you're, you're gonna be stuck with whatever your zone is. And that's gonna be the same regardless, uh, of, of whether or not we painted yellow on this map or wait until they ask.
No, this is chicken and the egg.
It is, it is. The reason why I think, sorry Sean, the reason why I think it's better to go this way is because you're not getting planning of that area out ahead, or excuse me, development potential ahead of your infrastructure. And it requires any of these landowners to come to you, the county commissioners, to make the legislative decision to reason it. You are deliberately saying, we get it, we see it, we see your concept, we know how you're gonna get sewer there, you can do it. As opposed to someone coming in and saying, I'm marked as yellow, therefore I'm entitled to X, Y, or Z. And then we're kind of stuck at that point. Uh, it's a little easier this way, gives you guys more control.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there a certain size development that would be forced to bring in sewer? I, I get it for the one or two lots that come in, they stay at the forty thousand square feet, but if the developer comes in and says, I don't really care about the density, the additional density based on the cost of my sewer, I'm just gonna put forty thousand square foot lots in there. They put a hundred forty thousand square foot lots, but that's not really what we want there.
Yeah.
Where's, where's that balance?
Uh, that's a good question. And, and.
Well, I agree with that, Sean. Because somewhere after, that's really not what we want.
Right.
True. I think this is where we need to get the health department on board with us. Because right now, Makayla was really concerned about any septic systems that are going out there because of the impact.
What was it? As of two thousand and eight, we were, we were over allocated on safe septic densities out there. I think it was in two thousand and eight is what she said last time.
So how do we deal with that, Rick? I mean, I don't disagree.
Don't allow septic systems.
Yeah, I think. So what we're saying is you can't develop unless you have sewers.
Or a common field, a common, uh, system for, you know, an HOA controlled common system.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
This is kind of the water, so, uh, uh, discussion that we've, we had for two and a half years. Uh, do we want to ensure any of these pocket sewage facilities can all be eventually absorbed together into, into one system? That's, it's kind of a question that we've got to grapple over. Not only do we have to answer that question now.
So what, what we're saying is individual septic tanks probably aren't going to cut the mustard.
Yeah, right. Not in most of these areas. Now, once you get on the other side of the river, maybe.
What's Makayla say about that?
I, I don't remember. I'll have to get with her and find out.
Well, yeah, right now, today, this minute, it's the first time I've heard there's been any issue with septic tanks out west. I didn't know that.
Yeah, and Makayla has a.
Of course, it's not like I spend a lot of time with her, but you know.
And, and they're not wanting to stop development. They're concerned about the impact that they're gonna have on the water quality of that area.
Yeah, even though the health board probably could say we're not issuing any more septic apartments out here. They feel like that's a legislative decision that the county commission should probably bite off on rather than, and then.
We should probably have a policy statement in the general plan that talks about, you know, working with the health.
Septic. Septic system, okay. Coming back to the medium sized residential lots, and we have land use actions to implement what is medium sized. Um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the term, um, smart growth or what it means in planning circles, but basically it's uh, providing communities that, um, are able, are capable of providing for all facets of the, uh, life of the people who live in there. So when we say that, we're talking about.
You guys are welcome.
Thank you. Uh, when I'm done gabbing.
Yeah.
Um, so we're talking about providing, um, infrastructure that isn't just for vehicles, but for people. Uh, in general, including those who are in wheelchair chairs or those who have a, a hard time being ambulatory. Um, that's one concept. Another concept is making sure there's the parks and rec that we talked about. Um, making sure that there's a variety of housing types, uh, so that you've got a good range of affordability. So I see this kind of go in two ways. Number one, when somebody wants to rezone to the medium sized zone, they have to, at the very least, provide sewer, provide a certain percentage of, uh, for parks and provide, um, streets that, that generally connect with each other in a decent way and provide, uh, uh, either trails or sidewalks, uh, for people to use. So smart growth in that way. And then the other option, and, and, and if we, sorry, if we go that way, that would lead to maybe third acre lots, right?
Right.
To give the developer, uh, the benefit of, uh, doing more than that. More space in parks than our minimum, more space in trails and active transportation than the minimum. And more housing variety, housing types, including the possibility of getting a little bit of moderate income housing in some of these locations. Maybe we say, all right, your base density is not third acre, it's quarter acre. So that's kind of the debate between the, the third acre and the quarter acre, asking these developers to perform in order to get the, the slightly higher density, uh, is what I would suggest. And so we've got two action items here. One is for fifteen thousand square foot lots. And it's just doing decent development. Come to the planning commission and the county commission, uh, with a concept that shows that you're, you're doing good street connectivity and, and, uh, you know, doing good development and we'll give you your fifteen thousand square foot zone, so you've got access to sewer. Um, or master plan your community just a little bit better and you could potentially get, um, quarter acre lots. Smaller lot sizes in areas planned for medium sized lots could be allowed for master plan communities, lot average subdivisions, connectivity incentivized subdivisions, so on and so forth, as long as they provide exemplary smart growth principles.
Okay.
So that's kind of my thought on that. Yep, on, on the yellow areas. What, what do we mean by medium sized lots? The third acre or quarter acre, depending on the performance of the developer.
Well, so I came from a community that it was divided up. Right now, so you could go there and say, okay, if I buy a lot on this side, or if I buy property on this side of the road, I'll be able to build a third acre. A house on third acre, and you know, it's right there on the plant. And if I buy on this side, I'm half acre. So if I buy that and want to go to a third, I'm gonna have to go in and ask for a, a rezone to change.
So that's, that's one of the, uh, detriments of, of doing it this way is you don't know exactly what you can get. But we show on the map, medium density. And they say, what's medium density? They come and they look at the two paragraphs that we, uh, uh, just read here and see, okay, here are my two options for medium density.
So step me through that again. So medium density is on the plat, not a third, not an RE fifteen or RE twenty. And so how did, how did they get to the point that they?
Understand what that means?
Understand what that means, or when they come in, what do they have to do to get third versus half?
So they would look at the map here and they'd say, okay, I'm in this yellow area. What does yellow mean? They'll look at the legend, let's go over there to the legend. It means medium sized residential lots. Um, what's the definition of that? They open the plan. And in the plan, it says exactly what we just talked about, third acre, if you do it one way, quarter acre if you do it another way. So I see that being the majority.
So basically it's an RE fifteen, but you have the ability to go to smaller.
Smaller, yep. So if they, it's, it's kind of like the incentive of, uh, that we give in clusters. We're just doing it a different way and not making it, um.
So what are the smart growth principles?
Um, so I do list them, uh, smart growth. So smart growth principles should be implemented as reasons are approved. So we're talking about street infrastructure on a human scale. So we're not just talking about roads that are for cars, talking about roads that are for people that connect communities together. Um, uh, in tandem with parks and rec, provide parks. Uh, I did get this little guy in here because I know this is an issue. Irrigation or secondary water should be provided with each park. Okay? Um, additional density allowances should be considered for the implementation, uh. Smart growth should include provisions for a wide rising, a variety of housing options.
Okay.
Use of lot averaging to create up to ten percent multifamily housing. Provisions for needed moderate income housing, strong trail network and excellent trail connectivity, street, a strong street connectivity and neighborhood connections. And large areas of open space with parks, recreation, farmland, et cetera. And the fostering of attractive communities that create a distinctive sense of place. That's a, it's a planning sentence. That last sentence.
So they come in, they're gonna say, okay, we, we.
We meet this.
We meet this. Who makes that decision?
You guys. You guys decide whether or not they meet that. You'll get a recommendation for the planning commission.
All right, so the, the kind of the process we follow now.
That's right.
They take the planning commission says yay or nay, they come to us and go, okay.
That's right.
All right.
Ten percent multifamily housing. What does that mean?
I just said up to ten percent, so we're not getting more than that. But basically, if they, so we would look at that, their proposal and say, okay, you could get up to quarter acre lots on average, just as, as a density. So that tells you how many density points you get. You could use up to ten percent of those density points for multifamily housing, um, if you do it in an appropriate way. So I'd say do it on the inside of your development so that it's not right on the periphery next to somebody's one acre lot where they're upset with you. Um, and we could, we could create a few more standards that go along with that. We'd have to create a zone that would essentially, uh, execute this.
So what does that mean? Does that mean fourplexes?
Don't know. That really is gonna come up to you guys, um, when it comes down to making the decision. Now, we can define it here if you want to get into that level of detail, or we can leave it up for you guys to decide in the future.
I'm a little down on that. And the reason I am is because we're taking an area out there and saying, okay, our density is gonna be in that area.
Yeah.
And so I would probably support just being single family houses outside that.
Good.
So like, look, we're gonna put our density here, then there's no sense in putting it there.
Multifamily. Well, I don't disagree, but I thought we talked about multifamily being down that, if we're gonna have it.
We did.
Needs to be down Twelfth Street.
Yeah. So what this, what this would do, if you guys, uh.
And maybe in some of the forty-seven hundred.
So if you guys were allowed this to stick in the plan, it, you could see some communities pop up where you've got up to ten percent multifamily or five percent, whatever number we, you guys decide on, in exchange for larger lots, um, kind of in the periphery. So your density points don't go up. It's just you could do this housing style, this housing style, this housing style. It provides for a variety of housing types in these, uh, master plan.
Right.
Well, what it does do is it changes the way the development, the community develops. And it changes whether you have rentals or not.
Yeah, that's true as well.
Yeah, because if you build fourplexes, you've got rentals. And if you don't, you don't.
That's true. Now, we could say condominiums and townhomes, that'll incentivize homeownership as opposed to apartments. But we do, do know that we'll still get rentals in those humans.
Well. Yeah, to me, there's a lot of difference. If we say condos or townhomes, then at least you've encouraged, you, you've got feasible ownership, which is gonna be a lot more difficult to justify that on a rental than somebody going out and plopping down a fourplex.
Right.
So you have.
Fourplex apartment.
Fourplex apartment.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I agree. The way I look at this, Brad, I hope you're listening to this. I kind of, I've said all along, I'd like to see this developed like Bynson. And, uh, in a few outside areas, they've allowed, allowed a couple of fourplexes, but nowhere else. And I feel like we're, we've gone the extra here to, to choose the area where we're gonna allow density. And so the area, the rest of it, I want, I personally would prefer to see that.
Standard.
Standard housing subdivision.
I agree.
Okay. Um, and I'm happy to, to make it so.
Well, that's me, Gage.
Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to that.
So I know, uh, there, at least one planning commissioner, there might have been a, a few more. They really wanted to see the lot averaging. Um, that still could yield single family. Would you guys be okay with lot averaging? And so we'll just take multifamily out. It's all single family in the single family area.
So what was lot averaging?
I'd probably prefer that over multifamily.
Okay, so lot averaging in our current code is, um, if you got an acre, you can go, our current code says you can go down to half an acre. As long as you're not creating more density. Uh, so if you've got twenty acres and, and you've got, um, uh, nineteen lots that are half an acre, your final lot is gonna be ten acres. If I did the math right. So that's what lot averaging essentially. And we currently have that on, on the books.
You know, to me, that's, if they're gonna do that, they haven't created a cluster where there's gonna be no maintenance or no water. They've created a.
A lot.
Part, a parcel of ground or a lot that they have to deal with.
There's a landowner who, yep.
Which I like that better than, okay, we're gonna have this cluster, uh, sec, segment over here. But nobody's gonna maintain it, doesn't have any water, it goes to weeds or, so.
Okay.
The only issue I have here, Charlie, is I'm looking, I'm not looking at this as a rural ultra rural county area anymore. I'm looking at it as a future city of West Weaver.
Right, I agree.
And if it's a future city, then we want it to be uniform and nice as it develops across the way. And I don't want to see lots of, uh, that's why I hate this, uh.
Cluster.
Yeah, that's why I hate that cluster because we're gonna have all these chunks of bare ground out there. And I don't want that. I want things to be uniform and beautiful and, you know.
Okay, good. Well, uh, I'll work on that. I'll let you know how the planning commission feels about that overall, but, um, my guess is they'll, they'll feel the same way as far as not allowing the multifamily out in that yellow area.
Just want a planning commission today.
Uh, as a work session tomorrow evening. Yep, and, and it's just, again, just draft conversation like we're having right now.
And you're welcome to come to those meetings, um, but we also have it on Zoom, so if you want to attend via Zoom.
I would.
Oh, actually, I'd like.
Probably invited this, right?
Yep. I'll get you the, uh, Zoom link to it. So Commissioner Jenkins, I just, uh, highlighted, uh, a paragraph up here that I thought about you the whole time I wrote it. I'm, amend the cluster subdivision code to require larger amount of minimum acreage to be held as contiguous open space. Consider allowing greater residential lot or, or, or unit bonuses for a cluster subdivision that preserves at least fifty acres of agriculturally viable open space. Amend the code to also ensure that agriculturally viable also includes at least the minimum amount of water needed to ensure the land does not create fugitive dust. So in essence, we would get into the cluster code to say, all right. So in essence, we would get into the cluster code to say, alright, this is not for the ten acre, uh, subdivision. This is for the hundred acre subdivision.
I'll be honest with you, I just didn't take that cluster code and strike it. So that's why I feel.
I'm not sure we need it now, do we?
I know it works really well in the Ogden Valley.
Well.
Or it could work really well in the Ogden Valley. So we can make it only applicable to the Ogden Valley if that's what, what you guys would rather do.
It can work in Ogden Valley. I think the cluster code could work out west if we were dealing with large, large agriculture pieces that were actually viable.
Yeah, so that's the question. Is, is fifty acres large enough?
Yeah, I mean, to me, if you, the piece you have that remains. You're giving credit for, has to meet certain criteria. Has to be large enough to have either an agricultural purpose. Or a recreation purpose, it just can't be exist for, to get them past the planning commission.
Yes, right, agreed.
It's gotta have reason, yeah, and water. And well, well, yeah, so with that, so you gotta have water, you gotta have, it's gonna be farmed, who's responsible for it? Uh, there just needs to be more. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, if we put some teeth into it.
Good. I, I, I'm, I feel the same way. I think fifty acres instead of these little pieces of five acres and ten acres here and there. Is gonna be a lot more conducive, but is fifty enough? Should we say a hundred acres of open space?
No, fifty's enough.
Fifty?
In fact, really, a twenty-five or twenty acre parcel is enough.
Yeah.
You didn't get a large piece of equipment in there.
I mean, I look, I look at a parcel I've got in the valley, it's twenty acres. That's, you know.
I figure out.
Twenty?
That's, I mean, I farm that right now, and it's, I want to run water lines on it. So twenty acres is a manageable piece. I mean, you can pay to have it cut. It's, it's an economic, twenty acres is an economic unit.
Right.
Five acres is not.
One of the reasons why I put fifty was not just because we want to make sure it's agriculture, it's also to restrict the amount of the, how many times these come up. So I'm still thinking about, again, Commissioner Jenkins, how much you're distaste for it. Let's re, let's restrict the amount of times it'll come up and make sure.
Other side of the coin.
Make sure it's significant land, but to, I'm fine with twenty acres.
But I think twenty acres would be, in my opinion, would be a minimal.
Yeah, I agree with Gage, brother.
Okay.
Twenty acres.
I, I'm probably.
With water.
I'm probably thinking way beyond any of our timeline. I just have this, in the back of my mind, I have this concern that. At some point in time, we're really gonna need to have space to grow. Hopefully by that time, um, space to grow crop to feed ourselves. Um, you know, because of global issues, global catastrophe, or even nationwide catastrophe. Now hopefully that time never comes, but if we've got somewhere to plant. Well, hopefully by that time, we've got enough technology to go vertical and we don't have to have farmland, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, that's the, uh, disaster preparedness person in me, trying to think about that. Okay. Um, buffers. So this is the other side of, um, uh, residential. We want to see buffers to, uh, keep dissimilar uses from being next to each other. So that's why in the map, like I mentioned, you see orange areas between yellow and red. So orange being, um, mixed use, uh, mixed use residential, that's where you would see a whole variety of lot sizes. In, including small lot sizes, including the potential for townhomes or condos or potentially apartments unless we say otherwise in the plan.
That's the orange.
That's the orange areas, yep, that you see around the commercial area.
I can't even see an orange area up there. They're all red.
Oh, they're kinda red.
Are you talking about this area right here?
No.
This area?
No.
Oh, you're right, it's hard to see. So there is a difference.
Wow.
So around here, it's harder, harder to see on these than it is on my screen.
Good night, I can't even see that.
I'll change, I'll change the color on the map.
I can.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is orange, that's all orange around there. Um, and then this is yellow. So essentially the orange will buffer the yellow, which is your max size from your commercial.
I like that. So you've got, so this is, I can't tell if it's in the red or orange, but assuming this is the commercial here. Surrounding that commercial would be a multifamily.
And it just follows, follows the same shape, you have mixed use. We also got mixed use between the tracks here, there's plenty of space to put, um, mixed use along the tracks line. Um, this particular version, Mr. Jenkins, doesn't have.
Yeah, who is me? I'd bring that right on down and connect those.
Yeah, yeah, I think that needs to be that whole way.
With, uh, this color?
Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
Look at that. Um, same thing, you see, so this is a kind of a riverwalk, um, mixed use commercial residential village. That's kind of that area that, uh, the folks we've been talking to want to develop.
Great.
With, um, some multifamily adjacent to it, up to the tracks, and then on the other side, we're saying, well, when you get sewer, uh, we'll think about it. Uh, parks, mixed use around the park, and then a, this, so there are different colors of red here. I'm, I'm gonna have to get in and change the colors to make sure that.
Well, I was gonna say, I just can already see some of it.
So this red here is mixed use, that different shade of red, that's vehicle oriented commercial. So using this, uh, road as a vehicle oriented, uh, commercial corridor for the future. Around the park would be mixed use commercial and residential, and then residential here with a residential buffer that runs.
Do you even need any commercial out there?
Not necessarily. I do know the folks out there are asking for a little bit, but this commercial isn't gonna happen.
That's a long way to go.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't really know if I'd have put that in there.
Okay. Um, but. Would you be comfortable with it?
This area I would, this area I would, this area I would. I'm okay with all that. I just don't know about that.
Okay. Um.
I'm okay with the mixed use around the park.
Yeah, park, I'm okay with that.
Use around the park and along the road.
Yeah, I, I would prefer to put the commercial over on twelfth street.
Right.
Because if you've got too much commercial.
It saturates everything you've never.
Number one, it screws up the market.
Yeah.
Because people are gonna start bidding, you know, well, I can go down here. So we won't, I wanna make sure that we're directing commercial where it's gonna make the most sense.
I agree.
In my opinion.
Right, right there.
Okay.
And then I agree.
So that's one of the versions we had, so I'll put that back on this map for the planning commission tomorrow. That'll all be vehicle oriented commercial.
Yeah.
Here at the, um, uh, excuse me, twelfth street and forty seven hundred. We've got two different colors of red, right at the intersection and right in here, that's vehicle oriented commercial. So you, gas station, uh, grocery store or whatever.
Yeah.
And then up here on nine hundred would be a mixed use village. That gives us more control over the outcome of that street. And a mixed use village, uh, stop.
What?
I just draw a circle.
What is that right there?
That's a, that would be a park right there at that curve.
Why would you put a park right there?
Just to provide a park for the, the mixed use areas here.
Yeah, but what if that guy doesn't wanna give him the park?
He doesn't, yeah, I, I don't know if he will want to give us a park. So at the end of the day, it'll be up to you guys on whether or not you implement. Um, whether or not there's a park there, uh, suggesting this greenish color all along the river and then in these big blobs. That's kind of the suggestions for park areas out there, and so that might just be too much.
You know, that, this, well, and you know, we're gonna probably have a park right here, because he wants to give us five acres.
Yep.
Who gets?
Uh, Brad Bland.
Oh, that's right.
And at the end of the day, we may see that there's a park here, maybe what we mean is somewhere in this village, we need a park. And so it goes there and that turns into a commercial.
And that I'm okay with.
There's a level of flexibility.
Yeah, wherever makes sense.
You know?
I'll find a park.
If we, with this river walk around all this. This will create one of the most unique areas in, uh, ever, to have a river walk down along there.
I agree.
Yeah.
That would be so cool.
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, no, that's, uh, that's a future River County right there.
Hmm, I think I've hit on the subjects that I, that I, I think are gonna be most important in the outcome of this. The, the medium sized residential lots and how to go about getting them, what a developer has to do to, to get that. And then, um, inside of these cores. Now, when we look at these cores. Let me, we're here. So going west, because we've already talked, well, actually, how about this area here? Let's, let's get in there a little bit. So this is, uh, where we've been looking at. Uh, that rezone. So twenty seven hundred and twelfth street, we're just saying along the, uh, road, mixed use commercial. Um, going up twenty seventh just a little bit, mixed use commercial, and then, um, uh, mixed use residential. Multifamily, small lots, kind of stuff all around there. Um, are you guys comfortable with that? I talked to, uh, Becky and Dan Hammer, who owns property right here. They really don't wanna see apartments in their neighborhood. Um, they don't wanna see high density in their neighborhood, and so I don't, you know, I, I don't know how you guys feel about this particular location. It is kind of awkward to have, we're, Mary of Slatorville saying, we don't want any density anywhere out here.
Right.
And then we're right on the other side of the line saying, well, maybe you should reconsider that. It almost tips their hand a little bit. Cause, I mean, it'd be foolish of them not to annex this in.
Well, yeah.
Cause it gives them commercial.
We're in that, but it's like, hey, if you don't want it, then annex it.
Right.
I know Commissioner Harvey was against the multifamily.
Yeah.
Okay. What about commercial in general? Do you wanna, well, you, you mentioned commercial going all the way down to twelfth street.
I don't remind, I don't, this doesn't bother me at all, and bring that right on down. And even have this go across the track to that road and back.
On the.
There's a road right there.
Yep.
The dead ends all the way along this track. I, that doesn't bother me either, have that in there.
Went halfway between that road and the track instead of.
Okay.
So you have, uh, medium sized right on fourteen hundred. Okay, and that's.
Yeah, I don't know about this. There, there's really nothing driving that, other than the fact we got a guy right there that wants to do it.
Right. Yeah, and that's, that's really the question is, uh, I mean, once somebody asks for it, are they asking for it because the market will allow it? Or are they asking for it because they're speculating? I, I don't know.
Well, that's, so that's kind of my opinion with these guys here. Is that I think they're looking at, like, if we can get all this density, we, we can turn and flip this thing.
Right.
Real quick.
And you could get a pretty cool development right there, preserving the corridor along the, the river if you got multifamily, but.
Yeah.
Is it time for it yet? That's the question, and really a question for you guys. Um, this one, this map does show that corridor, uh, vehicle oriented commercial along twelfth street and buffered on both sides. The north side with, um, uh, mixed use residential and the south side of the tracks with mixed use residential.
Great.
Okay, so I'll get that back on the map as well. Only reason I pulled it up is because of all the red dots that were on it.
Well, and I think when we start talking about multifamily, we really need to maybe start narrowing that down. In terms of what that looks like. Again, is it townhomes, is it condos, is it three story?
Right.
Is it two story?
So if you look, you look at the map, we don't even say multifamily, we say mixed use residential.
Okay.
Which is just a variety of use.
They, they threw these guys under the bus. Look at all the greens there, there's only a few reds.
Uh, my guess is that most of those greens there are probably the, the developer.
So the reds on there were no commercial along twelfth street.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Which, I mean, that's, you can, you can guess why. That's, uh, the community's major way in. That's the feeling of rural is as you drive through the, uh, drive down the major corridor into your community. And see farmland on both sides, it feels more rural, even if you pull into a subdivision that has curb gutter and sidewalk, and you've got. A huge house on a small lot in a plus percent.
Uh, so you've got, bro, or, uh, trains sitting there and eighteen well trucks going on down there. Are you worried about that feeling residential?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, when those trains go by or they're stopping there outside your backyard.
So.
Give me a break.
You have a comment here. You guys wanna take public comment on this? So. Okay. Um, so as far as this area goes right here.
Well, so hold on to Shay's comment there. The question about the red dots I had. Were, uh, had to do specifically with that development down there.
Right.
And, uh, the green dots on there, you said you, that you suspected most of those dots were from the developer.
Probably, right.
So I was just questioning that whole thing, Shay.
We're not taking any dots off.
Yeah.
All right.
So as we look at the area here, and that really ties into kind of my opening statements. As we were working with the public, the question is, where do you put the density?
Yeah.
If you're not gonna have.
Go slow, I wanna read these. So you can see there, let's just dissolve the cluster, West Weaver. I agree with that.
What does it say?
Let's just dissolve the cluster.
Yeah, we've talked about that.
It's always manipulated to create high density and unusable.
That's just what we talked about.
Yeah.
So that I don't think is a true statement. We've only had two cluster subdivisions implemented under our current cluster code. And both of those subdivisions already have farmers ready to farm.
Okay.
So we've only actually created two subdivisions.
So it has been usable.
It has been, it has created usable farming space.
Well, that's my point.
If they're talking about clusters of the past, maybe there were some.
There might be some, but.
Like I say, we've had a big debate. You remember, uh, we had that deal in there that said they can decide which pieces is most usable? Well, man, the, the farmers, they said, well, we can farm either one. This one will probably produce better than that, but they didn't allow that to happen.
That's right. So the, the way the code works right now is exactly that. If the farmer says, this is my most usable space. Then that's their most useful space. The code calls a prime agricultural land, and the definition of prime agricultural land is the area that's most usable for crop production. If a farmer comes in, the farmer is the expert, right? A farmer comes in and says, you might have better soil right here. But I've got better access, better turning radius, better water access, better everything here. I wanna go here and I'll bring in my soil.
Sure.
Then let the farmer do that. That's new prime agricultural land. So the code doesn't say where existing fertile soil exists.
Yeah.
It's where the prime ag land is, and right now, we've got.
Who ends up making the decision? Cause my recollection is, the farmer didn't, he, it, it was the property owner. And he had a farmer that was gonna farm it, and the decision ended up being made by. Was Department of Ag or, I mean, who made that decision? Don't you remember, when I first came, this was a big deal.
Yeah, I think openly, it fell upon the planning commission based upon soil reports and what.
Yeah. Soil report, so was the planning commission that ended up making that decision?
Yes, it's not the way the code is written, though.
Yeah, because in the end, the developer didn't get what he wanted.
Right.
The most usable piece.
Yeah.
And you know, most usable isn't always crop production. It's how it's built and what ends up flowing best and stuff like that.
Well, scale, scale that thought back just a little bit. Developer did actually get the area that they wanted to preserve for agriculture, preserve for agriculture. There's a, there's a small portion of that in the, the, uh, legal settlement, settlement that they came to with the neighbors. That they're gonna create instead of, um, ag, uh, a park. So you'll have a park and then Tom Favero, or if, if Tom is still gonna farm it. Will farm the rest of that land.
Right. And so. All right, let's go down the new messages. Boy, our, we're on fire right now.
Did you, did you read this one?
Oh, at some point, the open space will be petitioned. For more housing. What is the point of granting bonuses? I agree with that. Whoever put that in, that is absolutely true. Eventually, twenty years from now, they'll come back and say, well, look at these nice spaces. We need. We need more density out here, and they will petition to build on them anyway.
Well, but if, if it's done correctly with easements and covenants.
So the current code says on the open space, you have to have a conservation easement in favor of Weaver County. So when you put that conservation easement against it.
So then they can't come back.
And they can't.
They can come to you.
County commission could grant.
Well, yeah.
But if you were to, so if I were to buy a lot inside of a subdivision, it's more dense based on all that open space existing next door. And you three made a decision to reverse all that and sell all that open space or whatever and allow it to be developed, I'd be pretty pissed. And I'd be, I'd be showing up at that meeting.
Right.
And so there, there is a lot of protection in that.
Yeah, so we do have, so the permission does have the right to overturn a conservation.
Because it's in favor of Weaver County. If we had an avenue to, to, um, deed that easement to a third party. That third party would.
When the land remains with the developer, the land is intended to come back and add more housing. Especially when the farmer has a conflict of interest. Yes, the commission will reverse it. It's possible. Many of these people have the same, uh, uh, opinions we do on this.
But what if you had the conservation easement in favor of the HOA or.
Then they.
Other than the county.
Then the county commission would not be able to undo it. You can undo your interest in it, but the HOA would have full interest in it.
See, to me, that was, that's the way to go.
I'm gonna write this down.
Is take it out of the commission's hands, put it in the HOA's hands.
Well, I'll tell you this.
Now, even though sometimes the HOA could still have issues, but at least.
I can say there's a lot of people complaining about HOA.
Well, and I, and I'm one of the main ones, but I'm saying that takes the potential for. Uh, three people make the decision to take it out.
I'm just gonna say conservation easement to, oops, to be held by third party.
Okay.
Do you want me to write in there? Cause, cause we don't trust future commissioners.
Maybe the third party, maybe you needed to.
By trust.
You do a land trust.
So I've got a, a, a goal in here that says we will encourage open spaces, Weaver County will encourage open spaces by encouraging the. Public to create a nonprofit land trust, just like the Ogden Valley.
Ogden Valley, there's no reason we couldn't recreate the Ogden Valley Land Trust down in Western Weaver County.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that, so that land then gets dated to that land trust.
And we don't have to create, create that at all. That would be the public who.
No, that's a public creates the land trust.
So I, the, what I say in here is grassroots uh, creation of a land trust. If you guys would rather see the county commission sponsor a land trust, then. By all means, I can write that in there.
I would prefer that a group of citizens out there just create their own trust, just like they did in the valley.
Yeah, what that also allows them to do, so here we are. Uh, provide for the health, well-being and community character by fostering the creation of, of preservation, conservation and appropriate uh, maintenance of valuable open space. Okay, principle, open spaces are an in- integral component of a healthy and well-balanced community that should be encouraged and supported. Uh, action item, encourage the grassroots creation of a local land trust to purchase the development rights from a landowner's property and place a permanent and perpetual no build easement on it. It's a third party that's run by a board that exists out there in the public. Um, create a transferable development rights program in which bonus densities are offered to a developer for purchasing development rights from large landowners. Um, to, and create a means of prioritizing lands most critical to protect. And so just like we are going to in the Ogden Valley, create a TDR overlay zone where we say these are the most critical lands to protect. That's where the sending areas will be.
Yeah.
I would suggest doing the same out here.
Alright.
Now, I imagine most of it being on the west side of the river, but we can have some of that on the east side.
Sure.
If, if the Gibsons want that, their land to be in there, great, let's, let's do it for the Gibson's.
Yeah.
Um, continue to monitor the public support for the creation of a special assessment tax for the purpose of compensating farmers for, I should say, not developing. Now, this is uh, wasn't super comfortable to the public when we asked them this back in twenty eighteen. There were a few people that said we would certainly love to see a tax implemented to, to buy open space. Maybe not the land, but the development rights.
Right.
Go to the Gibson's and shell a bunch of money and keep it all open. But um, there wasn't a huge overwhelming majority that said tax us for that.
No, so, no.
Again, we'll continue to monitor that and see if that shifts and if it does.
It'd be nice to see, at least have that as a option.
Yep.
Like if you want to take the density off the table, then are you willing, you know, how much are you willing to pay for it?
Right. This is kind of the same kind of subject, right? We, we moved out here onto a one acre lot where we don't have any more development potential, therefore. It doesn't benefit us at all if the county allows more development to occur around us, right? And so let's go tell the county commission not to allow the farmers to develop their land.
Yeah.
So there's that, uh, uh, that side of it, or the other side of it is if you don't want the farmers to develop their land, buy the land or buy the rights from the farmers. So what you're seeing here is us saying, let's encourage a way for that to occur if it does occur. If not, farmer gets to develop.
Yeah, I, I'd like that as an option.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, provided uh, for open space areas within residential areas as a means of breaking up clusters of development. I say, I'm gonna change the word cluster. It doesn't mean cluster code.
Alright.
I'm just gonna say a bunch. And then change it.
Or just breaking up.
Development.
Development.
Ah, great. Uh, and provide recreational opportunities and ha- enhance visual aesthetics of a neighborhood. So all of this is kind of rolling together to be a comprehensive uh, plan for the future to create open spaces while also creating residential spaces. The goal being, and let me take you to community character, which I've written. Um, if the county commission and the pla- planning commission is comfortable with the way I've written it. Which basically comes together with these kind of um, goals and principles. The goal of Weaver County is to foster a future in which specific characteristics and differences of each small area within the we've. Western Weaver planning area are supported and maintained as development occurs. So identifying the character of the area and supporting and maintaining that. Uh, okay, we're a rural community, we're a farm community, well, let's make sure that our infrastructure looks like that, even if we're adding a little more density.
Uh-huh.
Um, so conduct small area planning that focuses and uh, and on and addresses the specific community characteristics and unique needs of each small area. Um, update one small area's plan annually in a consistent rotation that ensures each plan is routinely uh, reevaluated and readdressed. Something that I hear from the public, especially the Ogden Valley public more so than the west, is we adopted that plan, we all put our skin into it, it's sacred, don't change it.
Yeah.
That's not what a plan is. A plan should be reevaluated on a regular basis.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, initially, small area plan should address and explore the boundaries between the following small areas, you into Highlands, Taylor, West Weaver, Warren, Reese. And the non-residential areas west of eighty-three hundred west. In time, other or diverging small areas may emerge. Um, consider creating a form-based code as part of small area planning. You guys adopted form-based codes a few weeks ago for the Ogden Valley. I anticipate these village centers will probably want something similar to that um, out west. It doesn't have to be like. As, you know, the, the historic charm is something we're necessarily protecting, but form and function, eh, their principles in that are kind of universal.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a believer in form-based code.
Okay.
And it just helps make sure that we know what we're actually gonna get out.
Right, exactly. Uh, without requiring a developer to give a full concept.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Uh, that locks them into something that can't be changed to, right?
Yeah.
Promulgate the historical and cultural roots of each small area and find opportunities to incorporate the heritages, uh, the area's heritage into the built environment. So just looking into the history, for example, uh, was that Warren? I think there was a Warren Railroad, a rail station. I think there was a West Weaver Rail Station. I might be getting most mixed up and there was a Reese Rail Station. They've all been torn down, but there are historical folders of it. It'd be great to find the land and put a plaque that says, used to be a, a station here. So just helping the community identify itself and celebrate its history. Um. Support and encourage longevity of agricultural opportunities in Taylor, West Weaver, Warren and uh, Reese small areas. So. Encourage open space preservation of crop production, crop producing lands in both agricultural and where appropriate residential areas. I say where appropriate because it's not appropriate in all places. Um, somewhere in here, I mentioned that crop production and uh, uh, very low density animal racing is probably appropriate in these fifteen thousand square foot lot zones, just like it is. Our cur- our current code allows for.
Why do you have to even define that? I mean, the fact that it is zoned RE thirteen.
RE fifteen, right.
Or RE fifteen, I mean, yeah. Uh, they're allowed in there. There, and you actually say how many chickens, what, a horse or two cows or what they can hold in that.
So if, if we write it in the code, what you guys know when you're making new decisions in the future is what our, our, our goals are. So sometimes our goals and our implementation strategies is. Still do what we're already doing. Right? So when somebody comes and says, we want to change the RE fifteen code to not allow animals, well, the, the general plan says that. We actually want to support animals in these areas.
Sure.
So sometimes it's just saying our goal is to continue on with what we're already doing.
Understand, I just don't know. If that was the case, why wouldn't you change the zone? I mean, you really want a third or a half acre lot and not allow somebody to click out on it or a, a, a couple of goats or chickens?
Right. I agree. But no, yeah, I don't, I don't think so. I think you would want.
If you're gonna do just plain housing, then you ought to be down around a quarter acre.
Right. Uh, the other thing it mentions, and I don't think it's right here, it might be done further in residential. Um, is uh, low densities. And so we're talking about the ability for the land to re-vege itself, kind of like the whole cable conversation that we've been talking about. We don't want it to be so high density that it's just a mud pit in the backyard that's collecting flies.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, no.
Okay. Uh, provide support for the um, importance of local food production and local farm to table benefits of Weaver County's um, food economy in support of local farmers and reduced environmental impacts.
You know, in here, I want something that says how close an animal could be to your house.
Good. And we do have an ordinance that says that.
Yeah, we have codes right now that, that do govern that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, but you know, we had uh, we had a couple of people in Plain City who just said, you know, I'm gonna put a horse in the backyard. The guy, you look out there and literally though, they took the screen off the horse, could stick his head right in the, in the house.
Right.
I was like, you kidding me? You don't want that kind of stuff.
No, you gotta have.
And so, you know. Not everybody lives at the same level.
Yeah. So we're talking about animal pasture area. Our code's talking about animal housing, not necessarily animal pasture area. So animal.
Whatever. The structure you live in.
I think you do, you do have an animal pasture ordinance. Uh, we, we had that issue up with the HOA in Ogden Valley, you remember?
Mm-hmm.
That, that he was mad because the, um, he was feeding these cows next to, on his property, but it was next to the HOA. The fence. And it's something. And the HOA wanted it moved and said, no, you, you know, you've got your right to do that, but I think, I think when Iris went up, he s- she said, there's a ten foot rule that he couldn't. Uh, have, he couldn't feed him within ten feet of that fence or something. You know what I'm talking about?
No, she, she mentioned to me that there's a rule, but I, I don't.
Anyway.
Seen it. But I couldn't ask.
Well, so we had an issue out there where. One, the corner was here. And this house was here and this guy come in and built and had enough to feed behind, but he ended up feeding the house. Was ten feet from the fence and this guy's fed right next to the fence. So literally he's feeding his animals from me to you from the guy's backyard. Uh, that's the, you know, there ought to be a minimum distance from the yard, even if it's on your own land.
I think it's ten feet.
Well, you have ten feet in the enough.
Yeah.
So you can't, under our code, you can't corral or stable.
Corral.
Animals closer than seventy-five feet from the house next door.
Oh, seventy-five.
But we don't say anything about open pasturing.
Okay.
So there is a difference, and I cannot tell you what the difference is between a corral and an open pasture. How, how small can that pasture be before it becomes a?
Well, in this whole thing, you ought to address that.
Okay.
With these guys.
So the corral is seventy-five feet.
Mm-hmm.
But the open pasture is ten feet.
Open pasture is up to your, as far as I understand it, and I'll talk to Iris and verify, but as far as I understand it, it's all the way up to your boundary.
I think how Iris has.
Open pasture, you know?
It's open grazed.
Yeah, it's open grazing.
So how do you, yeah.
And that's, that's probably what I'll do is say, uh, you're no longer an open pasture if you're overgrazing.
But corral, you know, normally that's a, a defined.
Yeah.
Restricted area.
Right.
Where you have uh, your animals.
Yeah. A corral's different than an o- open pasture.
Right.
Now.
If your yard is fenced and you have a horse in there, that's a corral.
Yeah.
Regardless of. How big or small that is.
Right.
Yes.
I'm not sure it's that well-defined.
You're right. I, and I'm just, I'm throwing that out there.
Yeah, I agree with you, but I don't think it's that well-defined. Uh, some people might say, well, my back law, yard, my back lawn, that was a. A pasture.
Right, yeah.
And I'm using it as a pasture.
Yeah.
But your horse got his head stuck in the window.
Well, even if you allowed your horse to graze right up to your fence, that horse is gonna do everything it can to stick his head through and try and grab some.
Absolutely right.
Yeah, no.
Ruin the fences.
That's just why the man will bar.
That's.
Okay.
No to anyone, yet you let barnaminiums all over the west. Wow, there's a good point. Barnaminiums, they're, they're living in the barn.
Yeah.
What's the difference between?
Animals don't live in those barns. We don't allow that.
So they.
You don't allow people in the barn.
We don't allow people living in the barns with the animals.
Right, right.
Correct. Okay, so the barnaminium, they run their horses in there and they use them as, uh, training areas and things like that, but they can't, the whores can't live in their. It's like Tom Close, let's call what it is. He's got a barnaminium, he lives in the front. But when you go out in his barn, it's, it's a training area. It's a great big barn where he has an open. Uh, area where they run animals and train them.
So in our code, there, there is a, a separation between where animals live and where humans live.
Forty feet on the same.
Forty feet on the same lot.
Really?
Yeah, and again, that's correct.
If they lived in that barn, the animals, they'd have to be forty feet away from where he was living.
And not in the same structure.
And not in the same structure?
Correct, yeah.
Well, there you go.
Okay.
If they are, they're a violation.
That's a, that's actually a great rule.
I mean, we, we don't, that, that, well. I'll save my judgment and my opinion, but that's a, in my mind, a practical thing to do.
No.
I, yeah. And they're definitely not forty feet away.
Okay, so that's probably a call to Iris and.
Yeah, Joe, tell us the address.
Give us the address. Yeah, Joe knows, no.
But don't put the address in the comments right now, though.
No.
Contact Iris or, or someone who's planning and we can take care of that.
Perfect. Okay, um, the other part of agricultural opportunities, so we've got some implementation strategies. Uh, amend the cluster code. Um, as provided in the, the land use action that I already mentioned to you, support existing and future agritourism operations as a means of uh, supplemental farm income. And explore other means by which local agricultural operations may remain financially feasible, such as expanding onsite land use allowances that will help supplement farm income. Uh, as long as whatever you're expanded is, is not disharmonious with our surrounding area. So.
Yeah.
Just looking for farmers to find ways to stay in the business as long as they can.
Sure.
Uh, in, in order to keep the, the cultural heritage of the area.
We want to encourage that. Any chance we get.
What's in the chat? Let's look at those, see what others are saying there.
Alright, so this was.
So this how they do it on uh, on YouTube, all the YouTube uh.
Yeah, we read that.
But that one.
We saw that.
Take it away from the developers and the commissioners. What about ensuring water is available for the open space?
Yep, already there.
Okay, yeah, you have barnominiums all over west end of the county. They do on seventy-nine hundred and they're definitely not forty feet away, so.
Okay, I've seen all those. Good. Hey.
Well.
I don't have much more to tell you about. We can go all the way to one o'clock if you want to.
Well, you only got five more minutes and you're there.
Yeah.
This was a great, great uh, meeting.
Great.
To sit and go through this and give our opinions to you. Uh, it'll be interesting to see how the planning commission looks at this.
I anticipate it to be very similar to this.
Well, I expect we'll have a very brisk. Uh, discussion, you know, it'll go back and forth. I suspect it'll be all over the place, but at least they understand our opinion.
Yeah.
And I think that's important, that they understand our opinion and of course, they'll let us know what their opinion is. Well, this is over with, right?
Yeah. Best thing that I think we could do for the community out here is give them at least that commercial nugget that'll give them the financial ability to incorporate, take over their own um, destiny at that point, change the.
Well, I gotta say, I view this like Plain City. And Plain City, we picked our commercial little hub and it worked amazingly well, amazingly well. It's a very vibrant, active area and everybody that's in it is doing very, very well financially. And the co- the community loves it and nobody's complaining about living next to it. Uh, it's great.
Well, and you look at the taxes out there too, you're able to.
Well, yeah, so you know, that's the other thing I did want to mention. You know, this kind of depends on what you plan here. So I feel like these guys got scuttled a little bit in the master. Uh, the, the vote they had. Because these guys went out and said, look. If you vote to do this, based on Plain City, you'll be able to survive.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Plain City had the lowest tax of any city in the state.
Yeah.
And it's almost like they, they created an unrealistic. Deal there. I mean, uh. You know, we had the infrastructure built that we didn't have to pay for again. We had other things that were already there.
Yep.
So I think they should have expected that, have their taxes a little higher. I'm not saying a lot, a little. And uh. I suspect that they can uh, keep the, the, if this remains a county road and a state road. Twelfth street through their community, well, then the big expenses associated with that road won't be there. And they should be able to manage the other roads, the sewer, the water and everything that goes in there.
Right.
In those appropriate districts for a pretty low price.
Right.
And this should be a very economical place to live.
I think so. If we get commercial out there, most of the municipal services fund is funded through sales tax. It's not the property tax that's the majority of that. So any sales tax they get in the unincorporated area definitely enhances that municipal service.
You know what percentage that is?
Scott could tell you, but it's, I think it's like seventy-five percent.
It's big. I mean, look at.
Huge.
Look at GSL and WZ, they are the major.
Yeah.
Tributers to the. It's big. I mean, look at, look at GSL and WZ. They are the major contributors to the.
Exactly.
So the.
Well, so Western Z is pretty much a property tax, but GSL, they they actually have a sales tax, don't they?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, retail base.
All that salt they sell, they do have a sales tax.
They do generate.
Probably mostly GSL.
Right, but.
The numbers that I put together on that that board right over there, that is based on two point oh six percent. Of your taxable value going into the municipal services fund, two point oh six percent. That's pittance for property taxes.
For property tax.
Right.
Well, it's not very hard.
It's even written on there.
Misleading info.
Yeah, well, the so the city manager for West Haven showed up. It was almost as if he wanted to heckle us. I mean, there were, there were a couple of council members from from West Haven who were really nice and really big.
Oh, what did they say?
But the city manager, oh, they they they're just interested in seeing what's happening. They they all said that we have the wrong annexation declaration from them. They say that their annexation declaration goes all the way to Twelfth Street and all the way to the river. I cannot find a single document in their public record that shows that.
They sent us a couple of their annexation ideas and so.
Well, yeah, but when they were here the other day and we talked with them specifically about annexation. They told us up here that it went to Twelfth Street, but down here, there were several areas that didn't go across forty seven. Well, in fact, it didn't go across forty seven.
The crosshatch area right here, we have reached out to West Haven several different times asking for updated information. You see the crosshatch area, shaded area down in here.
Here.
Yep, up up to here. That is their most recent annexation declaration map based on, I believe it was a twenty-twenty-one adopted map. And so I, anyway, I was a little frustrated with the, it was a very unprofessional, I feel like, call him out in a public meeting.
So what do you got here? What does this mean, twelve thirty units? Oh, units per acre.
Yep.
Unit per acre.
Instead of, yeah, acreage itself.
So this is just deal with frontage here, and then this deals with lot size.
So basically, yeah, what this board is intended to do is show you.
Why you see thirty acres? Everybody wanted that.
So this is the the column all the way down. This is what it looks like up close. This is the context of it. This is the development style typically. And that's the how much frontage a typical lot of this size produces. And then once you get down further, we wanted to show, so your street frontage maintenance costs annually for eighty feet. Is two hundred seventy-one dollars for three hundred feet on a five acre lot, over a thousand bucks. Yes, that's street maintenance costs, and and that's a direct mathematical formula where I took three dollars and three cents per foot.
Where'd you come up with that three twenty?
That is a hundred and ninety paved road miles divided by the road budget, basically. I can't remember what that number was.
Right.
Whatever.
Okay, so there was a mathematical equation that went into that.
What about this comment about does not include B and C? The cost of the revenue we get from the state and then it was our cost.
Well, so that's that was the comment.
Yeah, that's a road mile.
Yeah.
That's all that is.
So that's the comment that West Haven gave us. So first off, the the West Haven City Manager. That was one of the heckles, and then one of the other other heckles was that our maps are wrong because we're not showing the correct annexation area. Anyway. What he is saying is you are misleading the people by telling them that there's not enough money to plow their roads. That that is not at all what we're trying to say.
We're not saying that.
What we're trying to say is that here's your development style, here's how much you pay in taxes. Here's how much that linear feet of frontage of your road costs to plow. That's all. If if you're trying to put a relationship between the two, we're not trying to do that. We're just trying to show you on a per-frontage basis.
Yeah.
This is what it costs for road maintenance.
Well, so once again.
Yeah.
This kind of drives my point. If if I was to say, okay, so where's the sweet spot here? I'd go right around that, just like that, right there. And there's half, third and quarter acre lots.
Yep.
Eighty foot on the small side, a hundred foot on the large size, and there we go.
That's the whole conversation that we had. Yep.
That's right. I never even noticed this.
Well, so it looks like there's quite a few in favor of the third acre.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right there, great compromise.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, this is good.
Okay, we're we're getting somewhere.
We're heading in the right direction with what most of the people wanted.
Yeah, we are.
And and just to reaffirm, two thousand and three versus two thousand and twenty-two, the opinions are very, very not different at all, very little differences in the fifties.
Really?
And in the two thousand and three plan, it says there's a huge dichotomy. We want no growth, but we want to take away no density rights. We don't want to take away away property rights. And so the two thousand and three plan did nothing. It just said one acre lots everywhere, which leads to an outcome that is exactly opposite of what we heard the public say they wanted.
Well, so what it leads to is a no-growth concept.
It leads to.
Acres and no density.
It leads to a mindset of no growth. It doesn't lead to an actual outcome of.
Yeah.
Well, no.
Doesn't stop.
Now I got to a point.
All all you do is you lose control of where that growth goes.
That's exactly right.
Well, let me tell you, growth is coming.
That's right.
It's a matter of we direct it or do we let it? We take a look at some areas down south in Salt Lake. You have sprawl, and that's what we would have.
So if you guys remember, I told you here a while back that my son was getting ready to build bio lot in Plain City. There's an acre for two thirty. Well, he just got shuffled out of that lot for two seventy. And this is seven or eight lots that are acre lots.
Acre lots, yeah.
Two seventy for an acre lot in Plain City? Are you kidding me?
Wow, wow. Yeah, that's amazing, isn't it?
Yeah, just just blowing my mind what's happening right now.
Five years ago, it'd be a hundred grand or less.
Or less?
Maybe eighty, yeah.
Yeah, eighties, or it would have been.
Yeah.
Did you guys see the average home price of Weber County as of just last year is four hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, I saw that.
Well, yeah, I'm sure you probably would. Yeah, four hundred thousand dollars. That is amazing. Whereas.
And if you look at Upper Valley, it's another hundred thousand on top of that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Eden's average, maybe two hundred. Something last night, it was Eden is about seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, something like that.
Yeah, for what? The average home? Oh, yeah, absolutely. And many of those are going way up above that.
Yeah. An alarming context or or contrast to that, five and a half, six years ago, Ogden City got, you know, acknowledged for one of the most affordable places to live because of the housing prices.
Now we're now we're ranked third of being overpriced.
Well, yeah, so in the top ten in the nation, Ogden was third, but then you had Salt Lake and Oran in the top ten. I don't remember where they were.
Yeah.
And they say overpriced. I I don't know if I totally buy it. I think that Ogden finally caught up with the rest of the wasetch front.
Well, they had its third, didn't they, Gage?
That's how I view it. We were third, Ogden was.
Yeah.
In terms of being overpriced.
Yeah, overpriced.
Just the way they did their analysis. I I can see why they did because we were so devalued, I think, before.
You know, again, these guys have put that study together. They're some economists that work for a university. All they're gonna do is look at the numbers. They're not, they don't look at the reality. Of what where we were five years ago in terms of our values.
Right.
You know, they're gonna look at how fast it shot up.
Right.
But they're not looking at inventory.
That's right.
It still comes down to inventory.
Right.
Yeah. Only time I've ever seen prices drop for the last fifty years in the real estate business is when you have more sellers than buyers.
That's right.
And other than that, I mean, it's pretty simple. Take Business One-O-One.
Yeah, that's right. Pretty simple.
Supply and demand.
Keep bringing it, keep bringing jobs in, and it'll stay high. Yeah. People looking to 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 buy. We're we're over time now, and so we could do this in another meeting if you guys want to. But on the west side of the river, other than this corridor here, we didn't have a big discussion about any of this up in here. So just so you guys know, this whole section right here that's in purple, it's Randy's property, and it's not currently zoned for light manufacturing. We're showing it on the map.
What's it zoned now? Ag, ag?
Yeah.
Well, I got a one o'clock meeting.
Okay, we could do this.
Well, so when you talk about that, you come out of Plain City and.
That's that road.
There you go. That goes down in Warren. There's another one up here that comes in. And that's it. So one, two, three. You have three, north of Twelfth Street, you have three roads that go east-west.
There's a proposal to bring seven hundred as well. This is seven hundred here. We already have a tiny.
Up to what, fifty-nine?
No, all the way over here, connecting to thirty-six hundred west.
Can't do that. It can go here and across the river into forty-seven, and this doesn't go north. This dead ends right here.
Thirty-six.
I mean, it goes down like this. Would you combine it right there?
Yep. In in a new proposal, and also if you look at this, Commissioner Jenkins.
Put that proposal together. Is that a Charlie?
Probably.
Good idea, I think.
Well, it depends on whether or not it's a good idea. That's my hesitation on it. So this actually takes thirty-six hundred across the river and right up into Plain City, connecting into the road by camps. And then then seven hundred comes across here. Now, we do, we do not show seven hundred crossing the river in this direction. Our twenty-eighteen maps did show seven hundred crossing, but there just hasn't been enough public clamor for that to occur. And Brad Blanch's development here doesn't show any kind of main road being preserved through.
Okay.
So is what it is.
All right, well, we'll see. So let's talk about this ag ground for a second. I don't see any problem with keeping that in ag ground. I mean, I think you pretty well have everything east of there defined. If you, you know, if we keep some agricultural, is that A one, A two, A three?
Which one are you looking at?
This stuff right through here.
So so all of that out there is on the west side of eighty-three hundred is M three.
Well, this is all M three?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not ag.
No, right. So when you look at this color right here, that that darker red represents heavy commercial.
Okay.
This lighter kind of pinkish color represents vehicle-oriented commercial. The brown represents.
I got another meeting.
Okay, shit, thanks. This is a good meeting.
This is a great meeting, Charlie.
And we'll have another one.
Thank you for your time.
I will try at least to zoom in tomorrow.
Okay, great. The brown is tech out there, either tech or office space. So we'll see an office complex out there. And then more vehicle-oriented commercial, and then another village right up here at seventy-five hundred west and seven hundred North Street. Now, I talked to Randy Marriott. Their master plan shows that this polygon right up in here, they want to see some industrial opportunities there. It's currently ag.
Okay.
But they also want to see some kind of a wetland mitigation property right here. They're just, there's not a lot of opportunities to do anything other than that, and he can actually. Work with other developers to create wetlands here in exchange for removing wetlands.
Yeah, so I know Randy's big on wetlands. He wants to keep. And I know he wants to keep quite a bit of this out there in agriculture, at least for the near future, so.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a long time before you heat up a lot of that ground.
So he chatted with me about this area in here. So these two sections over here, he would like the opportunity at some point to do single-family residential. It'll take some time.
Right.
Like you mentioned, and so I'd imagine he'll probably maintain agricultural uses until.
That's that's how I see it. This this is a maintained agricultural, but you know, we want, we may want to put that on the master plan that, you know, starting on wherever. Sixty-seven or wherever, that's open for potential larger lots.
Now, in that discussion, oh, you were there, Gage. That's right. That discussion we had with him and with Chris Royball.
Yeah.
The conversation about master planning this area out here, Chris Royball mentioned that there may be some money in 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 his budget. Maybe money in Stephanie's budget to put together a master plan.
Right.
The most ideal thing with the five thousand acres that Randy owns would be to have Randy put together a master plan. Now, I know.
Yeah.
He probably doesn't want to do it so long as someone else is willing to do it, which is fine.
Well, we've talked, I think we actually have a meeting next week with Randy and Chris to cover that.
Okay.
It's time. We need to do that.
Okay, and yeah, whatever that is.
We we need to, we need to take that mega site and start defining it down in terms of what we want this thing to look for, and then have him bring it to us.
The alternative is what you're seeing here, where we say, well, this area may be some heavy commercial, and and the only reason, what we're looking at here is buffers. We're seeing higher-density housing buffered by commercial, buffered by heavy commercial, buffered by office park, and then light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing.
Yeah, but I I think I'm gonna encourage Chris and Randy and Stephanie to come up with that design out there. And but what I want to make sure we keep some flex, just like we've done with Snow Basin, and we heard yesterday from Summit, the ability that five years down the road. Let's let's not lock them in because, you know, the dynamics change.
So I've got some text written into the plan document itself that says in the area of west of eighty-three hundred, keep an open.
Yeah.
Book for master plan possibilities.
Yeah.
But I do like the transitions and and buffers. I think that'll help. So you don't have M three rocket manufacturing right next to residential.
No.
That's potentially what you can get right now.
To me, the important part we do here is put in buffers.
Yeah.
And so whenever somebody buys a piece of property or they move into a neighborhood, they know, they're gonna know what can go across the street.
Right. And I think one of the best buffers you have right here is eighty-three hundred west.
Oh, absolutely.
If we were to preserve a freeway corridor on eighty-three hundred west, because a hundred years from now, you probably would need one.
We'll name one on eighty.
If we learn anything from Salt Lake County and how they're building out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot easier for us to start preserving now.
Yeah.
If we if we say eighty-three hundred west is a two hundred and thirty-foot wide right-of-way, and we just happen to have, my idea is my concept.
Is eighty-three hundred the one to do it?
Yes, I think so. That right now is the buffer between the M three and the A three.
I don't disagree with that.
But what I see is you've got one-way traffic on one side of that, two hundred thirty-foot.
So do we?
Right-of-way, and then one on the other side, and then just a green park space.
So do we, do we move legacy to eighty-three hundred?
Well, so that was a proposal that came out of the twenty-eighteen public involvement process.
Right.
But we did talk to UDOT, and UDOT said, you know, the chances are unless you can really justify that traffic out there.
You can't now.
Right. Because that whole swath in between eighty-three hundred and I fifteen, everything to the east of eighty-three hundred, they're not gonna drive west to go east.
No.
They're all gonna just go east.
And and that, they bring up a good point.
Yeah.
The growth's all gonna be east of eighty-three hundred.
Yeah, yeah. And I think once that freeway is there, I think it's gonna be pretty low impact compared to what I think a lot of folks are thinking it's gonna be. It's just going through people's lands, which makes sense. People have a lot of opposition to it.
But I agree with you. We need to start preserving that corridor.
Yep, both of them.
For future, yeah, both of them.
Just so you know, I don't know if you're aware, but UDOT actually changed their rules, or the state changed UDOT rules.
On one.
On corridor preservation.
I didn't, I didn't know what they changed.
In twenty seventeen, they changed state code to say that we are no longer obligated to notify UDOT whenever a development proposal comes up.
Really?
In one of their high priority quarters. Yeah, now that doesn't mean we shouldn't, I'm gonna put in the plan, but we still should.
Well, I think we should.
Yeah, give them the opportunity to negotiate.
Yeah, yeah. No, to me, that just helps us, too. And so they said we didn't have to notify.
No longer, as it turns out. I think somebody probably got tripped up by the UDOT process.
Yeah, somebody got mad at UDOT, but still.